Okay, it's 3:03 PM and we call over the Polyon Trail and we need the council meeting for April 16th, 2025. We'll flag the flag and have an invocation by our vice chair, Breakfield.
Flag the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us all together to work for your benefit. Now, Lord, just put your hands on Linda and let her take care of the trail and Dave as he takes care of the trail. In the Lord's name we pray, amen.
Okay, get started here. Secretary McDonald indicated he would be unable to attend the meeting. So I will call the role in his absence and then we'll start with Vice Chair Breakfield.
Here.
Counselor Pfeifer.
Here.
Counselor Watley.
Here.
Counselor Colvin.
Here.
Counselor McDonald, absent. Counselor Kemp, absent. Counselor Moore.
Here.
And here, right here. Okay, so we have a quorum of the council. So we'll continue on with the approval of the agenda, the amendments to the agenda. Can you hear none? I'm taking a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Vice Chair Breakfield, second I think I heard by. You guys heard Pfeifer. To approve the agenda as presented, all favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, the motion carries. Onto the approval of the consent agenda. Just a point of order, I did put in front of you the governmental to the consent agenda because it was not in the package. So any questions on the consent agenda? It's three months worth of bills, financial reports, interim management reports based upon your meeting schedule.
I'll approve the, or I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Counselor Watley, second by Counselor Moore to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any questions on the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. I'll call the role on that. Chair Wright, yes. Vice Chair Breakfield.
Yes.
Treasurer Pfeifer.
Yes.
Counselor Watley.
Yes.
Counselor Colvin.
Yes.
And Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Onto public comment, any public comment this time? Can you hear none? I'll go on to Citizen Rep report. What do you report this month or this month or the month before?
Well, just, it was good to get back on the trail after the winter months. I had the chance to ride up towards Leonard and, and trail's in great shape, you know, for this time of year. So it's good to get back out there.
All right, good. Good to hear that. Okay, on our round two presentation, Melissa Prowse from Oakland County Parks and Recreation is here to give us a little insight on what Parks and Recreation does from the county side. She may be able to walk with me for us.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for having me and for letting me take a little bit of your time this afternoon. My name's Melissa Prowse and the manager of planning and development for Oakland County Parks and Recreation. And I just want to say it's very fun for me to be up here today because I sort of started my career in Parks and Recreation working at the Community Foundation for Southeast Michigan on the Green Waste Initiative program. And one of the first trail experiences I had was Amy Murray taking me horseback riding on the Polyon Trail. So it's very fun to sort of like see this all come full circle and the county now has some great resources I want to talk to you about that we might be able to help you sort of enhance the Polyon Trail in a way that you see helpful. So as you probably know, we had a millage increase that passed in November, which put us from .35 mils to .65 mils, which is incredibly exciting for us. And we have a lot of really cool projects in the works. But one of the things that we talked about as part of our millage campaign and talked to some of you about is that we as Oakland County Parks have not been super involved in the county trail network. I'm sure you all know Kristin Wiltfame from Economic Development. She tends to sort of be the person who helps coordinate the trails countywide. We used to do that at Parks and Recreation. I actually was hired in there as the trail network coordinator. But shortly after I was hired in, our commission sort of wanted to focus a little bit more on our internal park trails and a little less on the, the community trails out in the rest of Oakland County. And that was 20 years ago. So things have changed dramatically since then. Our commission is very supportive of the trail network in Oakland County. And essentially, we want to use some of this millage funding that's now coming in to support the trail system in Oakland County. We have no idea what that looks like yet. And that's why I'm here today is to just start the conversation with you guys and let you know that, you know, we are, we are interested in helping better further the Polyon Trail and all the trails in the county. We're interested to know what your needs are in terms of maintenance, in terms of promotion. If you have capital improvement needs on a regular basis. I saw your master plan online today, which I think goes through this year maybe. So I'm sure that that's up to be potentially looked at again in the future. These are all things that we are interested in helping you with. I don't have a budget. I don't have a number to give you to say, here's what we could bring to you either on a one-time basis or an ongoing basis. But really wanted to just start the conversation today to let you know that we're interested in working more with you and learning about how we could possibly support the Polyon Trail going forward. So with that, I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions or if you have things that kind of come to mind, like big projects that you are having a hard time funding or maintenance needs or signage, really anything. We just want to hear, you know, how it is that we can help you.
All right, council. Okay, Counselor Moore.
Something has come up for us in the village along the trail that I think would be important for you. And it deals with Oakland County part of this too. I went to a meeting at our old mill and there is some interest in us getting some funding out going and somebody going in there and keeping part of it as a museum. But they can part of it for small business. And one of the fellows, I don't recall his name right now, but he works for Oakland County.
Okay.
And he's helping us to procure funding to get that mill restored to a decent level. And we'll get put some small businesses in there and maybe a little bicycle shop for repair or maybe a little coffee shop. Small businesses like this is what this man does that came with, with Oakland County. He restores these old mills and stuff. And so we finally had some interest that we may be able to go forward and put that mill back together into something. It could be available as a stop house among the trail.
It's right on the trail.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's right next to the trail.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
So I would like to talk with you about that. So if you could have your name and number going forward. So I have some information, we can share some information and see what we can do.
Yeah, I'll leave some cards for you guys for sure. Yeah, I mean, anything, it's all on the table. Amenities, things that support the trail that enhance the user experience on the trail. I think that makes a lot of sense. And we like historic buildings.
Thank you. Don't forget, this is really important to us because we've finally had something we think we can do to restore this mill.
Say goodbye Melissa.
Counselor Watley.
I am super excited about this possibility. I know this was presented last night at the Paint Creek Trails Commission.
Yep.
This is like, we talk about, you know, the, our communities coming together and really working to improve the trail as a whole, having Oakland County in here as a partner or whatever it may be, is spectacular. And the same with the Paint Creek. It is such an amazing opportunity to grow this trail network, grow our amenities, help our patrons, all of our residents, and regionally the connectivity between the trail networks. So thank you for coming in and for this opportunity.
Yeah, you guys are, you're second on my list. So with Paint Creek Trail was last night, we're sort of gonna make the rounds. Want to hear from everybody, see if there's some consistency or some similarities and things that would help everybody or if everyone's needs are a little different. We need to look at each trail differently. You know, we're, we'll figure it out as we go.
Mister Pfeifer.
I share and Mr. Watley's excited, but I met with Julia Del Rippe this morning. She told me about your presentation last night. And I think this is definitely good news for us. And I would, I would encourage, I look forward to, let me say it this way, I look forward to sharing as we get to a point where you guys are actually stepping in and able to actually assist, sharing it out to the public. A lot of people obviously have mixed feelings about millage increases. And I think just letting them know that they can, you know, that they're going to see an impact within their communities from, from this millage increase, I think is going to be a positive. In terms of where you guys are at, I know you're doing this initial kind of introduction and discussion with the various trails. Do, have you determined as a, as the county, a timeline of, okay, we want to start reviewing projects right away or in three months or in six months? Have you guys talked through any kind of idea of, you know, I mean, I'm on a lot of boards and I know like if we have new funds or whatever, we generally will create buckets and determine where those funds are going to be best used. Have you guys had any of those preliminary steps to have kind of a target? Or are you simply gathering information at this point with a, a date uncertain as to when actions will start occurring?
It is the latter. We don't have a specific timeline. I will say, I would have liked to have gotten out and talked to everybody sooner since we passed the millage back in November, but we have been pretty frantic with some other projects, internal park projects and getting some things up and running. We've hired a few new staff. So we didn't want to do, we don't want to count our chickens before they hatch and do too much pre-planning or program development before we knew if the millage was going to pass or not. So we're playing a little bit of catch-up, which is why I'm here now. But we don't have a specific timeline. I think we're interested in knowing if there are specific projects you have that have a timeline that we could potentially help with.
Yeah, so I mean, just as a follow-up and then I think that, that definitely, you know, I don't think today, at least I'm not ready to say, but I think we could have some great discussions, maybe very soon so that at least we can give them some ideas of our future projects that, that might qualify as soon as possible. Because I know that there's limited funds and I know that those who squeak quicker with more info and maybe more shovel-ready probably would have an advantage.
Yeah, we haven't figured out yet, to your point, you know, this could look like a grant program. Or it could look like ongoing maintenance support. It could look like support for designer engineering. It could be big one-time expenses that we're helping with or more long-term ongoing expenses. So we have not, we have not put the money in those buckets yet.
Okay. Thank you very much. And thank you again for you coming.
And I just so you know, I don't expect to walk out of here today with like a plan of what you guys would like. This is more just to start the conversation. I fully expect you to all go back and talk with your respective folks and have some more conversation. And, you know, maybe we can circle back in a month or two and, and keep the conversation going.
Citizen rep, green.
Just a comment, we're due to update our master plan this year and we've had great help from the county in the past. And it would seem to be the excellent opportunity to really understand us and know what's involved. And you guys also have a lot of the statistics and population information and stuff. So just a good working relationship probably help both of us.
Yep, absolutely. And Kristin, you know, Kristin will for now continue to be sort of that planning coordinator for the county. But we're, once we sort of talk to everybody and figure out what role makes sense for Oakland County Parks, we'll be working with Economic Development to figure out how we can best work together. And Kristin is fantastic. We've actually went to high school together. So I've known her for a very long time and we work very well together.
Okay, well, we got 16.9 miles, Melissa. What kind of competition are we up against with the council account? How many miles is your total number?
Total? Oh gosh, you're, I don't, I haven't been the trail network coordinator for quite some time. I don't know the total number. But I mean, you know, you're on the Oakroots map. You're one of the major trail destinations within the county. I think everyone is pretty much on equal footing in terms of how we would like to spread our support around.
We're definitely the best.
For what?
We're definitely the best, so.
Yeah, when you like a, when you like a role we've done, where we come from, you know, sort of, we've accomplished. We mainly for Linda and the two other trail managers being passed. But you know, our, our much to give research then to create what we created, you know, to come up pure Michigan trail along the way. We've had several donors, volunteers on the trail to get towards that today. So this is a huge job in our for us to get the trail, not only to what we're at today, but to enhance it for the future.
Yeah, I mean, you guys have done obviously an amazing job. Like I said, I have sort of been familiar with the trail from long ago when we were providing some of that initial funding from the Community Foundation. So it is, it is pretty incredible to see what you've accomplished. And like I said, we're just here to, to support however we can.
So what's our next step for you or?
Um, well, like I said, I don't have a specific timeline. We're going around a meeting with everyone. I think we probably won't get done with all the discussions we want to have until probably May or June just because everybody's very busy and there's a lot of different communities involved. But I would encourage you to, you know, talk amongst yourselves, talk with your communities. I'd love to circle back in a couple of months and maybe have some more detailed discussion about either specific projects or maybe conversations on short-term like master plan support versus long-term like your capital planning, just to get a better handle on what makes sense for us.
Is there still plans for grant programs to come back to what they were before?
I don't know if it will look exactly the same as it did before, but yes, that is part of the conversation. It's figuring out what those programs look like. Yep.
Vice Chair Breakfield.
Counselor Colvin, any comments?
Well, I just wanted, I'll make a comment just because we just recently at the township approved a pocket park right next to the trail. And one of the issues that came up was maintenance of that park. So if we're going to have these conversations, it's something I think, yeah, we should include in that conversation just because we want to make sure we understand.
Yeah. And we're talking, I mean internally, we're talking about pretty much everything. We're talking about, you know, we could potentially support the salaries of trail managers or hire our own trail managers for folks that don't have them. Or we could talk about, you know, your daily regular maintenance or your contracted maintenance for mowing or tree removal. I mean, we're open to all of those things across the board.
All right, so when we get our free ideas out here, we will get you a list.
Yeah, if you want to reach.
Patrol Manager Moran.
Did that include like say crossing lights and things in that?
Absolutely. Yep.
Because that would be, don't eat, don't eat.
We have a lot of experience with crossings.
Vice Chair Breakfield.
Real quick, keeping in mind Addison Township is horse country. And keep the focus on, I think you and Amy rode the trail.
We did.
And I don't know where you started, where you ended up.
Couldn't tell you.
But in Addison Township, I mean, the village of Leonard going away toward, what is it? Metamore, not Metamora.
North, up here.
North.
Up here.
There is a horse trail that goes right beside the.
Yeah.
That's very important. Keep that maintained.
Yeah.
Horse safe.
And that's just on that northern section.
Yeah.
Along the paved section.
Right along the paved.
Yeah, we love, we love question. We have a lot of question use in a few of our parks, so, yeah.
All right, there's nothing further. Melissa, thank you for coming out. I think we've got your information here. I'm emailing you, provide it to the council here.
Perfect.
Sure.
You can touch.
Do you want to stick around?
Yeah, Vice Chair Pfeifer.
Yeah, so thank you. One, one more thought. Our next meeting in person, now that we're on this every other schedule, is June 18th. That sounds like it falls pretty good. I would just maybe say, why don't we invite Melissa back for June 18th? And we find a way to communicate prior to that to maybe get a, at least a rough list of some things. Just so we make use of time and we're, I, I, I know that if we wait too long, the people who get stuff in front of them first are going to have a better opportunity. I'd like to be included in it, so.
We're going to try to do this as fairly as possible.
Yeah, no, and that's not a dig on that, but hey, you, you said you, a couple of months more of talking to everybody before you're ready. So that falls right in line with our next meeting. So that's June 18th. I, I, I'd love to invite you. I, I bet you the board would love to have you as well.
I'll put it on my calendar. Let me know if you don't want me to go.
Counselor, you're in.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, on to unfinished business. And on to unfinished business is the master plan update preparation. In your packet, council, is a rough draft of the outline of our master plan schedule. And you can see there's nine items on there. We get maps from the county, which a lot of this is probably just duplication of effort. Just updating some of the dates and some of the, some of the numbers on there. Community open houses, survey monkey, survey, public hearing notices, community meetings to be held at the, I want Friendship Park.
Friendship Park, which is already in the schedule.
And then I want Addison Library.
Correct, which is also in the schedule. They already got those scheduled because I wanted to get them on the books so we knew we had a date.
And we review it, approved by the council, get approvals from municipalities and then approve them and the INR will be in business. Does everybody have the current master plan or access to it? Okay, also that's a yes for the role. All right, we'll get you a copy then. It's pretty lengthy, something like a thesis.
And to be completely honest, I haven't done a ton of this except we set up a kind of event and I got the dates scheduled. So we have, because those dates are in the future and I wanted to get them on the books. So those dates weren't lost.
Yeah.
You got it.
Okay, moving on to new business. Counsel, your packet is a proposal from Oxford Township. And if you haven't seen or read about the Thai Cobb marker that was placed in Stony Lake Park, this is another exciting opportunity for the council to have two more markers put on the Polyon Trail. One's in honor of William O. Smith, who was prominent gravel industry pioneer in Oxford. The other one is in promoting Bryce Beamer, who was the radio voice of the Lone Ranger back in the 40s and 50s, I believe, on that. So CJ Kornacki, who's been instrumental in getting these items proposed and the Thai Cobb marker in place, is here to give an overview on what he would like to present to council and maybe consider approval on these two nice additions to the Polyon Trail. So CJ, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much for taking the time to consider the request. So basically, back in January, I launched a new historical marker program in Oxford. We're going to put 16 to 18 of these markers around the 36 square mile township. Each is going to consist of a boulder that's been, being donated by either the Edward C. Levy Company or Canic Materials and a bronze plaque on that boulder with text and images recognizing significant people, places, events, structures in Oxford Township. And Oxford Township Parks and Recreation has graciously agreed to mount all the plaques. We have already unveiled our first one at Stony Lake Park that was honoring Thai Cobb and his special relationship with Oxford. He fished out here for more than a decade, even played on the town's baseball team in a few games. So we unveiled that on April 4th. It's had a great public reaction. I've already secured donations for three more plaques that'll go on the ground this year. One of which is for William O. Smith. He was the founder of the gravel industry in Oxford. He opened the first gravel mine here in 1912. And by 1924, because of what he did, we had five gravel operations going here. And they were putting out millions of tons. I think it was 40,000 railroad cars a day filled with gravel. And if it wasn't for him, we wouldn't have become the gravel capital of the world at one time. And that's why we have the boulders as part of these monuments. And actually Shirley Atchison and Chris Atchison are here today. They own Rich Lawn Cemetery, which William O. Smith also founded in 1927. Shirley is Mr. Smith's granddaughter and Chris is the great grandson. So I'd like to put this over, Canic Materials will be donating the boulder for this marker. And I think it'd be nice to have it over on the Polyon Trail near the place of the bench and the bike rack are now, where we'll look where the township's looking at creating the Levi's Link Park, which will be a township owned and maintained pocket park. So, but I'm not sure if we want to put the boulder right on the pocket park, on that land. We're in the process of receiving the donation for, or adjacent to it. So that's why I'm coming to you for permission today to put that over there. And the second marker would be honoring, again, Bryce Beamer, who was the radio voice of the Lone Ranger. He lived on West Drainer Road from 1942 to 65. And he was the Lone Ranger from 41 to 54. And I thought the northeast corner of the, the trail there at Drainer Road would be a perfect place for that boulder. Another nice high-traffic area and it's near the Beamer home. I think it's a, be a nice enhancement for the trail. I mean, people love local history. These are, this would be another added feature on the trail and an added feature to enhance our local history to promote and preserve it. So I'm looking for the trail council's help with this today.
Any questions? Treasurer Pfeifer.
Not really question, well, maybe, but love it. I think it's a really cool program and I, I commend you for doing it. And it's something that I'm going to glance over at him and go, hey, maybe we could copy. So I think, I think it's an awesome idea. So you've got donations of the boulders.
Yeah.
Are you, is it costing you to get them placed or is Konek in some way helping you with that?
Well, that's what I was saying. So the boulders, bringing them over, sorry, thanks for bringing that up. It's in my memo. Seradan Construction, they're, they're an Oxford-based company. They're bringing all the, they're going to be bringing all the boulders over to their sites free of charge. So I've got the boulders free, got Seradan transporting them, Parks and Rec mounting them. So the only thing I've been getting donations for is to actually buy the plaques, which are about 3,400 each. Like I said, we've got donations for four of them. I just applied for a grant to hear on another four of them. So at least four are going in this year, maybe eight. So we'll see how it goes.
3,400 per plaque and that's because they're bronze and.
Yeah, esch bronze plaques, about quarter inch thick, 16 by 20.
Okay. Well, keep up the good work. And I, I fully support them being as part of our, our trail. I think that's exactly where we should have, you know, it's perfect. So I, I fully support what you're doing and would love to have those on the trail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a comment from council? If not, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, this is what you've been waiting on, so you can move forward. I moved, I moved to approve charter township of Oxford Historic Property Agreement as presented and authorize the Polyon Trail Way Management Council Chairman to sign the agreement. Trail manager Linda Moran will coordinate the project with CJ, the MDNR and any other necessary individuals required to complete the historical markers placement project.
Okay.
Motion, second on the floor.
I'll support.
Okay, motion by Vice Chair Breakfield, second by Counselor Colvin to approve the historic marker placements. Counselor Mador.
Yeah, I was reading the agreement earlier and it talks about the owner of that is, there's some split ownerships on certain parts, the DNR and you. So do both have to sign?
We will probably have the DNR sign off on it. I did talk to the real estate division, Matt Lincoln, by email. And we want, Curtis and I both want to clarify if there was any problem. If this falls under our bench placements, our signage, that sort of thing. And he said, yes. He would like the historical department of the DNR, which I didn't even know was a thing, is a thing, couldn't read it. And he'll get back to us. So they consider it as the same category as a bench or a stop sign or a wayfinder sign. So they don't have a problem with it. I asked Curtis if he could get the verbiage changed to chairperson signing that. Because we're not technically the landowners.
Look, they could send it over to the township attorney.
We're just the lease, we're the management company. But just like the benches and things like that, we sign off as the landlords.
Yeah, the landowner is what caught my attention. Like, well, we're not really landowners.
I have talked about that. And we did talk to the DNR about that. And they consider it in the same category as our benches, stop signs, wayfinder signs, that sort of thing.
Shall we make some change or just leave it the way it is?
I would just leave it the way it is. And if this, if this agreement's good, then we move on. If not, then we will revisit it and leave it at that.
I think that's always have the township attorney change to, to say chairperson. That's, that's a small thing. Because the school district have got two that are going on their property and we're making some minor changes for them, so. And just to note, I would like one agreement for each. So it wouldn't be just be one, it'd be two agreements, one for each spot, basically, so.
Because I would love to get one of those for.
Is that your question, Linda? Is that your question? When you raised your hand before, as far as you have a question?
I have a question. Why? I have to say.
We have a motion on the floor, so if it doesn't appear, we'll get a board on us. Any further questions from council? Okay, if not, I will call the role. Go with Counselor Mador.
Aye.
Vice Chair Breakfield.
Yes.
Chair Wright, yes. Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Counselor Colvin.
Yes.
Treasurer Pfeifer.
Yes.
And Counselor Watley.
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved.
Oh, thank you very much. And just to let you know, we're definitely doing an unveiling because I didn't mention for the Michigan Aggregates Association, they paid for the William O. Smith plaque. So when we do an unveiling, we'll invite all the council, the trail council to come out there that day, hopefully this summer.
One thing, real quick, now you can advertise. You can put posters up saying donations are needed.
Oh, I've been, oh, I've been doing that.
Have you?
Believe me, yeah. I actually had people call me after they started seeing when I first launched it, you know. They, they came to me and I've gotten other people who are interested, they've called me. So people are excited about that. Like this is another way to get, just like the trails, a great way to get out and explore the community. Having these markers around the township is a good way to get out and explore the township. So I appreciate you guys willing us to partner with that.
So seeing the Ashsons are here, anything you'd like to say to applaud anything like this?
Is there anything you would like to say?
No, well, you go ahead.
All right. I think it's a great idea just to bring the old into the new.
Yeah, celebrates Oxford heritage, giving the property to all of here and gives the future a chance to see.
W O. did so much around Oxford, nobody even knows who he is. I mean, I'm, I'm still learning.
It looks like your mom wants to tell you to tell us something.
Well.
You'll have to speak up. My hearing aids are going down.
We had a secondary place and I talked to CJ about it, that's all. She doesn't know that word's going exactly.
Oh, okay.
We want to do it here because it's higher traffic and it's right in front of a gravel, active gravel pit, just kind of all kind of fit together. And actually, I just mentioned too, this is going to be, this is the first of two markers that are related to their family. Because I want to do one out at Mount Pleasant Cemetery on Baldwin for Seth Francis. He was a Civil War veteran who fought, he's buried there. He was fought at the Battle of Gettysburg. He was captured by the Confederacy in a subsequent battle. And he spent over a year and a half in some of the Confederacy's worst prisons, Libby and Andersonville. Came here to Oxford, was a successful farmer and a lumber merchant. And he did, did a lot for the community. Owned a big 200-acre farm. So it's just funny that two of the, two of these markers will be related to the Atchison family here.
They're both her greatfathers.
And, and Saturday, I'll be here 96 years.
Look at you. Look at you.
She rides a mean zero turn.
I like to say that the Ashsons, Shirley's, both their families have been, have been big parts of Oxford history, and it's nice to, to have them around. It's gonna be nice to have family to, you know, share this with. A lot of times you do these markers and there's nobody around anymore to appreciate it, or there's no connection. And here we have two living connections to the things we're doing to help promote our history, so. All right, thank you.
Very nice. Thank you, CJ.
Thanks CJ for your efforts as well on this. Okay, ready to move on to our agenda here. And next up is appointment of the citizen rep for the Polyon Trail. Kevin Green has been our trail rep for several years. How many years, Kevin?
I think it started in two thousand fourteen.
Two thousand fourteen, yeah. So, so this is another tribute to you for stepping up and wanting to renew that. So Kevin has put his interest into the council to be renewed as citizen rep, which is a two-year appointment for the bylaws and the local agreement. So any other questions or comments? If not, we'll maintain a motion, motion in the packet, or create your own.
Mr. Chair, I just have a question. Why, isn't there like a standard time of the year that the term should renew? Why is it like effective tomorrow? Is it, just because when we renew it, it goes two years from then?
What happened was is that along the years, this is the time that it was, I guess, discovered that you need to be a two-year renewal, and this is where...
Gotcha, okay. So that's the anniversary date from that line? Because that's what it would, okay.
Well, it's a, it's a, I don't, I don't think I have the, the old agreement, but it's a two-year period. It didn't say the timeframe, but if you want a motion to amend that, I don't think there would be...
I was just curious, it seemed odd.
I mean, if you want, if you want to amend that, I don't know if there would be any opposition from any council members to make it effective, you know, January one of twenty twenty-eight or something, you know, but...
I think it went for a while where it wasn't even renewed. It was just whoever was doing it just kind of kept doing it. And then at one time, I remember Curtis brought up, you know, as he was looking at things, became chairman, maybe we ought to make this more official, and it might have just been the timing of it at that point that, you know, just happened to be, let's do it in April. That's my great question.
Works for me.
So, okay, any motion on the floor?
I moved to reappoint Kevin Green as the non-voting citizen-at-large. Did somebody, is there a question?
No, it was interruption, no.
Okay, no, sorry, I didn't want to interrupt anybody. I moved to reappoint Kevin Green as the non-voting citizen-at-large to the Polyon Trailway Management Council for a two-year term expiring April seventeenth of twenty twenty-seven.
I'll support.
Motion by Treasurer Pfeifer, second by Counselor Coleman to reappoint Kevin Green as the council rep for a two-year period. Any further questions or discussion? If not, all favor signifying by saying aye.
Aye.
If opposed, any motion carries, congratulations to Kevin.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. MMRMA insurance premium increases. Do you remember, council, at our January meeting, it was requested that we, was it the Orion?
Orion.
Okay, I put Leonard Yard in there, so my mistake on that. But anyway, the Orion, the Orion risk was requested to be put on insurance, so they did that, and they come back with, what, twelve hundred dollars originally for that? And then Linda, in her efforts, got it done at nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. So the total premium increased to forty-five hundred and sixty-nine dollars. It was thirty-four ninety-five, I believe, somewhere in that range. And council, they gave me the authority to just go ahead and approve the price change, but I wanted to bring it to council to say, are you comfortable with that increase in there? Do you want to shout the premium on in the future? If not, well, life as it is. And just to show you where, for MMRMA, we get back roughly a thousand dollars in the pool reimbursements for excess funds that weren't spent. So what's council's pressure on this? Move forward with the renewal?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to...
Okay, Counselor Watt.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to update the renewal for that MMRMA Risk Management Authority for a period of February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five through February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-six, in the amount of four thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars, and authorize the chairman to sign the coverage proposal on behalf of the Polyon Trail Management Council. This amount, four thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars will be, amount will be expensed to account two nine eight, eight five three, nine five five, dot zero zero zero, Insurance Polyon Trail.
Motion for, second to the motion.
I'll support.
Motion by Counselor Wiley, second by Counselor Coleman, to approve the renewal of the MMRMA insurance contract with the addition of the Orion, just a reminder. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll call roll here. Counselor Wattley.
Yes.
Treasurer Pfeifer.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Chair Wright, yes. Vice Chair Brackfield.
Yes.
And Counselor Mador.
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. On to item ten B, Polyon Trail Logo Redesign Proposal. Trail Manager Moran was approached by Jacob Zemanski to use the Polyon Trail logo for a fundraising effort. So in your packet, council, is the design that Jacob would like to use for fundraising effort. The reason it is run council because it's a alteration of our logo, and as long as council doesn't have an issue with it, we can, we're seen on, so we can formally approve Jacob's Eagle Scout project, is that what it is? No?
No, if you remember, some of the council members, I mean, Jacob is the one that did those lovely railroad crossing signs at our parking lots, Leonard Yard, Water Depot, they're fabulous, with little historical plaques on them. They're, it's really, really cool. He came back and it's his capstone project for college that he wants to do. So his project was, he wanted to purchase a couple of additional trash cans, one for Orion Township and one up by the county line of the Gorgon Room, where there are no trash cans. So he wanted to do this fundraiser, and before he graduates in June, he has to have this project done. So I go forth and prosper the young one. So this is where we're at, he's doing this fundraiser to try to raise money to get us some lovely new garbage cans.
So, okay, council, it's in front of you for consideration. Vice Chair Brackfield.
Well, I'm, one of the people, I was one of the people that did the design, the original logo. And I was, when I saw the new one that he had in mind, in mind, I liked that very much. It didn't change from the original, and my little touch of the colors, and the railroad tracks going from trail to tracks, and I liked that. He did a great job. I would have no problem with that one.
Any other comments? Okay, hearing none? You got a commenter, Counselor Watt?
No, I was making sure, he was working on something.
All right, all right, all right. So any other comments? If not, motions in the packet or create your own motion on this if you wanted to follow with it.
I can make the motion, send packet. I moved to approve the request from Jacob Zemanski, am I saying that right? To use as redesigned Polyon Trail logo for the purpose of fundraising event. The redesigned logo shall only be used for this fundraising event, and unless expressly approved by Polyon Trail Way Management Council, no other redesigns of the Polyon Trail logo will be permissible for sale or distribution. Support.
Motion by Vice Chair Brackfield, second by Treasurer Pfeifer, to approve the one-time redesign of the logo for Jacob Zemanski. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all favor signifying by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. I want to purchase a new signs. Trail Manager Moran is requesting to purchase twenty-four new map signs and replace on the Polyon Trail. This does not include installation, correct, Linda?
Yeah, the five thousand dollars that I requested includes installation. We will be using volunteers, as we did last time, to install the new map signs. I did add a little extra money in there from the actual purchase of the signs. There are some fence posts that have decayed and may need to be replaced, so I just added a few extra dollars in there to bring it up to a total of five thousand. Just in case if I needed something, I had a little bit of a litter room.
Okay, because right now we're only three hundred and forty-five dollars.
Oh, okay, well, then that's fine.
So it gives you the ability to purchase, whatever the question was raised, because that's what some, that's what the, the quote's for.
Yeah, I, I misspoke, I've got something else here, so.
Okay.
I may have to buy some additional fence, or some additional posts and some hardware to hang a couple of them, because some of the posts have rotted. So, yeah, I may need a few extra dollars.
No, it's also five hundred, we can administratively calculate that possibly.
I just want everybody to know, I'm not gonna be spending much, I want everybody to understand what I'm spending.
But you, you don't necessarily need to exchange all twenty-four signs, you just want some for when they get to be replaced, and replaced, but as far as...
There's probably fifty percent of the signs right now that are on the trail that are showing extreme wear. Some of them have a hundred percent fail. All of the signs in Leonard have failed. I, I don't know what's going on.
What's the matter? This is soil in Leonard is different than Oregon.
I think so. I'm thinking it's acid.
We have, we have a lot of sand or a lot of clay.
Yeah.
The mix of both of the two, and we, we move so much water, we don't...
So I'm thinking, my plan is to order all twenty-four signs, have them all on hand, and then as time allows, so at the summer, replace the ones that are completely damaged. And then by the end of, by fall, winter, have all the signs replaced.
So once we, considering we approve this, how long will it take to get the signs in stock?
In stock, probably six weeks.
Six weeks, okay.
Yeah, because we're going to update the designs to list the new vault toilet in Orion. I think right now our signs indicate that the connector between Paint Creek Trail and Polyon is a temporary, we'll have that redone to actually indicate that it's a completed section. There's a couple of other things that we need to have noted on there.
Yeah, Counselor Watt.
This somewhat goes against what I normally like to do, just get it done, but in light of the presentation that was given today and the potential opportunity for a partnership, if we were to redo the signs right now, and whatever that partnership or the relationship grows to be, there could be an opportunity for a re-sign redesign, or maybe funding, or whatever, whatever the partnership looks like. I'd hate to spend this money from our fund balance now, and then we come up with some collective partnership and we have to redo it. So I would say, just my opinion, maybe this is an opportunity for us to, to table this item, at least for a month, until we see what that relationship becomes, or for two months. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, you know, was there, just on that note, was there anything like your discussion, in this case Oakland County, Paint Creek Trail, or anything like that, or...
So I wasn't there last night, but I've heard some, I was updated on, and it's a different dynamic. So over there, right now, they're in need of a trails manager, and we've spoken about this, and how our, our structure's a little bit different. We hire a trails manager directly, and it's, Linda is boots-on-the-ground, you know, she takes care of business over there, as opposed to the Paint Creek Trail where it's, each community is responsible for its own maintenance, and then the trails manager is mostly administrative. So it's a totally different setup.
Absolutely. That's a good, good insight. Trail Manager Moran, is that something that potentially two months is it gonna make or break your signs?
No, two, two months is not gonna make or break us. In fact, you know, if we have an opportunity to utilize other monies, I would love that. You know, you know me, I always like helping the community, spending everyone.
And then for some reason it doesn't pan out, this is a whole story for a certain amount of time.
Yeah, I mean, Jimmy will, Jimmy will honor it, because I'm, and I was going to be out with him tomorrow at the Orion Sunrise Rotary Cleanup Day at the Pollinator Gardens, if anybody wants to come out, you know.
Vice Chair Brackfield.
Well, I could direct this to Melissa.
Yes.
Since you were foolish enough to stay here during the whole meeting.
Wanted to know what's going on. We're just warming up.
It would be something that you would be interested in, the signs?
Yes, I think so, for sure. Yeah, I mean, I think, I forget who it was that mentioned that our potential investment in the trail system would be a nice, you know, sort of public-facing thing to showcase how the village funding is being used. So I think signage, you know, is definitely an important part of that for us. So I, I mean, I would never tell you to hold off, but if it doesn't hurt to hold off, it's not a bad idea.
And we could put your logo on the sign, too.
We would love that.
Treasurer Pfeifer.
Yeah, I think that partnership, which just kind of came together, is, is maybe something we could highlight. But I also, it's time for our, our master plan update. And so signage is something that is obviously a pretty important part, so it makes sense that we have a couple of moving parts here that we get in, in alignment prior to pulling the trigger, because maybe as part of our master plan, maybe we're gonna relook at signage, or maybe, maybe there's a reeval there as well. So I love the idea of waiting and using the dollars when we have more confidence of what our, our future looks like in both of those regards.
Okay. Vice Chair Brackfield, last word.
I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this decision until the June meeting, when Melissa will be here and we'll be able to have more definitive answers to what about the signs.
Support, great motion.
Okay, motion by Vice Chair Brackfield, second by Treasurer Pfeifer, to postpone to the June eighteenth meeting about retaining purchase of new signs. All favor signifying by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. I want two fence removals. First one is a fence removal from property north of Indianwood Road. From your packet, council, there's a area high red showing a section of fence that Trail Manager Moran wants to remove. This is roughly about a hundred and twenty feet long, and she had him about wanting to do this, so Linda, give us your story.
Okay, about twenty years ago, Matt Thirber, Mark Thirber, Mark Thirber, forget me, Mark, donated three outlots north of Indianwood Road with the hopes of developing a parking lot. It's not gonna happen, but we own those three outlots. There is the old railroad fence there. The homeowner at the furthest northern lot has repaired the fence, before it was down and we could just walk onto our property, has repaired the fence. We now do not have access to our property because of a fence. My concern is if we do not remove this fence and regain control of our property, we're gonna have another five thirty-nine Jocelyn situation. Curtis and I did, we did have the property survey, Curtis and I did go out last November, I believe it was. We did put stakes in the ground, and we did put signs that said Polyon Trail Property on the property line. Since that time is when the fence got fixed, so we can't get access to that property any longer. I can enter it from the front section, but I can't get to the back half of the property because of the fence. So I would like to go over there and just cut the fence and take the fence out. It's our property, technically, not technically, it is our fence, and I just want to circumvent any possibility of having another five thirty-nine Jocelyn. We own that property, not the DNR, so it's ours.
How's the encroachment?
How's the encroachment?
Yes, there's an encroachment on this?
Yes. He, the landowner, the homeowner, most of the property, and he's illegal, illegally dumping copious amounts of, of lawn waste, grass clippings. He's actually filling in the drainage ditch with lawn waste. But I can't get back there and do anything about it, because I'm sixty-two years old, I'm, I'm not gonna be climbing anymore of those fences. So I'd rather cut them down.
Right, council? Treasurer Pfeifer.
Well, so first of all, obviously, I'd be, wanna make sure legally that we're, we're covered. I understand it's our property, but this sounds like something that we should be notifying that homeowner of their encroachment and of their abuse of our property to cover ourselves, to preempt, you know, unnecessary legal expenses forward. A, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of care, I think that is. So I'm not quite that old, but it seems like something old people say. Um, but, uh, yeah, that, that would be my only recommendation. I'm, I'm all for getting ahead of these things, get, get, um, you know, control of our property. So I a hundred percent agree with, um, with, uh, Trail Manager Moran and want a supporter in this. I just want to make sure we don't accidentally step in something unexpected that could be more costly. Uh, so that's my comment.
Counselor Wylie, then Counselor Mador.
Just, uh, Mr. Pfeifer's point, you know, if we notify the homeowner uh, that we own the property and the encroachment issues, and then we follow up with code enforcement uh, for waste disposal, and then we can probably move forward from that point. So at least have them rectify the issue like you have in the past.
Counselor Mador.
Just to ma- make sure I understand this correctly, so the Palladium Trail's in the west of all those parcels. The parcels thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen are the ones that were donated to us, the small slivers. The bottom two slivers don't have a fence, you have complete width excess.
The, the front has a fence, but it is broken down and I can just walk into.
The what does?
The front, the first parcel closest to Indianwood.
Okay.
Just, is not enclosed, I can just walk onto the property, there's nothing there. The middle section is so overgrown with brush, uh, my plan is to cut some of the brush back to gain access to that property and also take that fence out. Or as much as I can, I'm not gonna cut all the trees down. Some of the fence is actually grown into trees. Uh, but I just want to be able to have access to the property freely, um, from the back half of the property.
Right. And, and you mentioned on parcel fourteen, there's, there's a storage tent shown on there, it looks like a straddling the line, so it's encroaching a little bit.
We did contact code enforcement through Orient Township, Orient Township did contact the homeowner and told him to move that and all of his materials. They have since done that, and that was about the time we had the parcels surveyed. And then we put up signs. So we didn't, we weren't really concerned about it because the fence was down. We could, we could just walk onto the property. But since we had the property surveyed, and since we put the Palladium Trail Property signs up on our property, the homeowners come out and fixed the fence, so now we can't have access to our property any longer.
Do you know if they've even been notified, or do they understand that that's not theirs? Any, any?
I have not personally talked to that particular homeowner, I have talked to the neighbor, code enforcement has talked to the neighbor who had the link to, and the, I think they had a boat on the property and woods, wood piles back there. Code enforcement did talk to them, he did move the property, but that particular homeowner, I, I have not had no contact with. So I would be more than happy and willing to send a letter and, um, take it from there, just instruct me what you want me to say in the letter.
It, well, and be- before I get to that, I was, I was looking in here because we have another fence we're gonna deal with in the next item. And, and that one, there's a cost removal, and in this one, there isn't.
This is a very small fence, I can just go out there and.
Okay, alright.
Pull it out.
Like a page wire fence, or whatever, yeah, or?
The other one has a danger component into it, so I won't be able to do that alone.
Okay.
So why don't we entertain selling these lots? Not gonna use it.
The only people.
One makes the issue all the other. And I'll get an appraisal on, uh, in that piece and divide it by three, and here's our offer, would you like it or not? If not?
That's your decision.
Well, I'm throwing it away, Councilman, I mean, that way there. Well, man, it's all liability.
Yeah, is there any, is there any benefit for us having them, I guess?
I don't see any. You can't put a parking lot, it's a forty-foot wide, uh, piece of property. Be nicer parking lot, you gotta turn out of the Palladium.
Sounds like it's drainage ditch in one portion of three.
It, it's actually a drainage ditch, um, that goes underneath, uh, Indianwood Road, it's part of the road condition drainage. It goes there, and then it goes underneath Palladium Trail to a swamp area on the west side, just north of Indianwood.
Yeah, there's some lawyers that's running water in it.
Yeah, it's not.
Was there a boat on there at one time?
Some kids put a little road load or something on it, you know, a couple of years ago, but most of the summer it doesn't have water, so it's just, it's kind of just a muck on the west side. I mean, I don't care what you guys do with them, but I just don't want another five thirty-nine Jocelyn situation coming up.
Well, Council, uh, it sounds like we want to notify the homeowner number one. Counselor Mador.
So these were donated to the Palladium Trail?
Yes, we, they are not owned by, uh, the Department of Natural Resources, they are owned by Palladium Trail Management Council.
And, and so, uh, to Curtis's point, we don't really see a benefit to having them. If anything, there's probably more liability than benefit, um, and, and the value of them is probably nominal.
Yeah.
It's almost like we could go approach those folks and say, if you pay for the survey and all legal descriptions and property transfers, we would donate them to you almost, just to get them out of our hair.
Because, uh, if you were to take out.
I mean, maybe you could collect a hundred bucks out of them.
It's nothing that's of value for the most part.
Those three parcels have homes on them?
All three parcels have homes towards the, to the east of the Palladium.
Maybe you start off with, we're not gonna give it to you free, hey, would you be interested in buying sort of five hundred bucks or something, you know?
I mean, the, the, the monetary value is minimal.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I would, I would recommend keeping the front lot, just because it's close enough to the road and close enough.
More usable than the others?
We could probably use it, eventually maybe put a picnic table out there, you know, make it.
I can see that.
Setting, but the back two lots are, are utterly useless.
Mm-hmm.
I don't even know if the homeowners would be having to buy them, I mean, there's just nothing there.
Right. They might say, no, you're just leaving their lettuce blurred stuff in there.
Yeah, exactly.
Treasure Pfeifer.
Um, yeah, so they align with different properties, which would make it, make sense for maybe them to go back to the property owners that they make the most sense for, as opposed to all to one. Uh, that's one thought. Second thought is, um, I, I, my take would be, um, as in any negotiation, whether we really care or not about the financial, it's still, it is still Palladium, uh, property, and we want to do the best as we ca- as we can as stewards. So I wouldn't say any price. I would, uh, I would make them aware of the situation. I would, um, uh, at that, and maybe at that point, offer, say, there may be interest in the Palladium Trail, uh, uh, selling these, if you have interest in the properties, and go that way. And what we think has no value might have more value to them. And let's, uh, the, he who says the first price loses. So I, I just would encourage us not to say a price, and see if there's interest in those homeowners that have the alignment for a little extension of their property, and, uh, and, uh, tell them we'd entertain offers. That's my, my two cents. But I, but I like the line of thinking, it's more liability than it is value. We don't have, I, I mean, I don't see anybody fighting for this to have any value to us or to the trail. Um, and so, uh, to me, uh, your line of thinking makes perfect sense to, uh, figure out how we, uh, potentially just unload these.
Counselor Wylie.
Um, I do, I guess, tend to agree with Linda, at least for the parcel that's, uh, the most southern parcel, closest to Indianwood Road, retaining that one, because that could be something, if the trailway expands, users, it could be something to put in a vault toilet there. And then we pay for, um, portable restroom out at the parking lot, and that seems like a pretty decent location for that, so.
Okay, Bob.
The other two are not even accessible, if you were to try to walk to the northern section, because there's a drainage ditch and whatnot, it, it, it's completely unusable for us, so.
So Linda, do you want to work on a letter to these two homeowners then?
Yeah, I mean, we work on a letter and just kind of, it's, the one homeowner, um, that, where we've had code enforcement go out there would probably be more amenable to purchasing the property. And I've not had any contact with the, the furthest northern homeowner, so I don't know anything about them.
Now, this property is exclusively owned by the Palladium Trail.
That is correct.
Not through the township.
Mark Thurber bought it at a tax option, and then donated it to us. Um, I have, I have the actual deed, and, um.
Okay.
Yeah, it will also get it back on the tax rolls for Orient, because right now we're not paying taxes on it, so.
Yeah, there might be a sense of value on it because it's, uh, it's property too.
Yeah.
Counselor Mador.
And, yeah, if you say the person on lot, that, with lot oh one four behind them would be more interested or amenable to work with.
Yeah.
And, and maybe the person to the north wouldn't, but maybe the person in the north, you'd say, well, the guy in the south might buy the one behind you also.
Yeah.
That might be a little nudge.
I like it. How you think you like a business with.
Yeah, you know.
And, you know, it, my thought is, we had that property surveyed, so we know where it's at, and it cost us twelve hundred bucks to have it surveyed. If anything above making us whole, I'm happy with.
Oh, yeah, that's recent, that's recent, yeah, it is, isn't it?
Yeah, if we can.
Yeah, just try to recoup our money.
Survey's at, we had it, the front, though, east part of the property surveyed, and we know where Palladium Trail Property on the west side is at. So we know where other surveys at. And those lots already exist on paper, so it's just a matter of selling an outline.
You don't need a motion on this. No, no, we'll, we'll proceed on, then, uh, we'll update Council at the June meeting, um, whatever we're doing with this. Onto the approval of the fence request near five thirty-nine Jocelyn Road, which, uh, Council's well aware of for the most part, on why this is in front of us. Um, there again is a something that we may want to hold off on to, Council Wylie's point of giving assistance for cost and, and, uh, getting rid of it. I see, uh, Trail Manager Moran thinking, don't, don't do that.
Yeah.
Do you want to move forward, uh, Counsel Wylie?
May I make a statement?
Do you need a motion on the floor before I have discussion, or no? Or can I have discussion?
Yeah, let's have a, let's have a motion first, see what people want to go with it. So if people want to move for, uh, contracting, uh, you said you don't want a contract with U, you want a contract with Dave?
Dave directly, I'm, I don't ten idea, but my company doesn't.
Goes back, and we'll have discussion, then motion from you. Go ahead, Counsel Wylie.
You want a motion, no, or discussion?
Discussion, go ahead.
Um, so that, I guess you kind of answered my first question, um, that we're gonna contract this out with, uh.
Dave Vanderburg.
Dave Vanderburg Services.
He services, I think he's an LLC too.
Okay.
Okay, I just didn't see it on there, it's weird. Um, and then are you, because I know we've had some issues with that, so they're, are they working with the sheriff's office or as needed basis?
Um, I have contacted the, um, sheriff's department, and when we go out there to do it, uh, we'll contact the, the sheriff, they'll send us officers, a deputy, as much as they can. Um, I have to notify our attorney to notify their attorney when we're gonna do the work, because we can't just pop up out there. They want, the homeowner's attorney wants us to notify them all. So we will notify our attorney to notify their attorney, the Oakland County Sheriff will be on site as much as they can be, as long as there's an officer available. And then I don't want to be out there alone. I have contacted three different fence companies, and all three said unless we're putting the fence in, we won't rip the fence out. We're gonna have to go out, it's a lot of fence out there, we're gonna have to cut it down, we're gonna rip it out, we're gonna have to dispose of it. So that's gonna be, it's gonna be a full day out there. I mean, if you guys want to come out and help, that would be great, you know, but. Curtis.
Well, sir, Counsel Colvin.
I just want to, this seems much more exigent than the signage. This seems, this is ongoing litigation, we've been dealing with it forever. I, I would not want to put this on the back burner.
One more. Counsel Wylie.
So the per- post-motion though has Linda Moran Services LLC.
You don't see that with Jay Vanderburg.
Okay.
LLC, correct?
Yes. Curtis and I were having a lot of discussions. This agenda was intense.
Make the motion, if, if you understand.
Counsel Wylie.
Uh, I'm, I'll move, uh, to contract with Dave Vanderburg.
Yep.
Services, uh, to remove all the fence encroaching on the Palladium Trail Management Council located near five three nine Jocelyn Road in Orient Township, the amount of two thousand dollars. This amount to be expensed from two nine eight eight five three nine three two one zero zero zero, grounds maintenance.
I'll bank you up here, because I put out in front of you that, that should be our expenses. So that's where the money should go to, I haven't made a mistake on that. There on the bottom there, the last line.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. Change my account to two nine eight eight five three nine six two point zero zero two.
Yeah, expenses.
Support is amended.
All right, uh, mentioned by Counsel Wylie, seconded by Treasure Pfeifer to approve the fence removal near five thirty-nine Jocelyn Road, price not to exceed two thousand dollars. Need further discussion. Okay, here again, we'll do a well call vote, we'll start with Counsel Mador.
Aye.
Vice Chair Breakfield.
Yes.
Chair Wright, yes. Counsel Moore.
Yes.
Counsel Colvin.
Yes.
Treasure Pfeifer.
Yes.
And Counsel Wylie.
Yes.
Yeah, motion carries, Chair.
Before you move on, I, I know the, I see the next one coming up has that maintenance of grounds, and that's the one that was changed. But I think we just changed on the motion we just did, was that the intent there?
So the.
Uh, yeah, yeah, okay, I see, I see, good catch, good catch, I was having a soft there.
Yeah, you, you amended the amount, expense account for ten H, and we were just on ten G.
Yeah.
So you were, it was correct, the, the maintenance of grounds was right for removal of the fence at the nine thirty-two account. Okay.
Do we need to redo?
Yeah, let's do, let's do a redo on that, uh, move to make some of the motion, and then, uh, board out the new motion. Let's keep the original motion in the packet.
Perfect.
So.
I will rescind my motion, and then, okay. I moved to contract with Dave Vanderburg Services for the removal of the fence encroaching on the Palladium Trail Management Council property near five three nine Jocelyn Road in Orient Township for the amount of two thousand dollars. This two thousand dollar amount should be expensed to account two nine eight eight five three nine three zero two point zero zero zero, maintenance of grounds.
Support.
Okay, we got a, we got amendment motion to approve the two thousand dollar expense, uh, for the fence removal of five thirty-nine Jocelyn Road. And, uh, we'll be called, we're on that, if no further questions or comments. Counsel Wylie.
Yes.
Treasure Pfeifer.
Yes.
Uh, Counsel Colvin.
Yes.
Counsel Moore.
Yes.
Chair Wright, yes. Vice Chair Breakfield.
Yes.
And Counsel Mador.
Yes.
All right, uh, the, the last item, uh, agenda is the twenty-five, twenty-two five Trail Resurfacing Project Fund. Uh, Manager Moran, I'm gonna let you give the mobile heat on your, these areas.
Okay, well, as you know, um, the township, the charter township of Oxford was generous with us in the amount of seventy-nine thousand three hundred twenty-nine dollars and two cents. I would like to request additional monies of thirty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and one cent to bring the total up to a total one fourteen twenty-two, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and three cents, of which I have already spent seven hundred and fifty dollars for tree work in Leonard, and thirty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars and three cents for gravel to be delivered. So the additional monies will be spent according to the attached sheet, phase two, phase three, and phase four. Resurfacing from Clarkson Road to Jocelyn Road in Orient Township, doing a little tweak, um, south of thirteen thirty-five Jocelyn, because you're, the winter, you want to smooth it down, I'm not happy with how the road or stuttered it there. Also, Lake George to Hosner Road, I have four hundred and fifty ton in Leonard that needs to be dumped there. And I have four hundred and fifty ton from the west Canic gravel pit entrance all the way to Hosner. So that basically will take care of our resurfacing project, we'll be done with that. We did the asphalt repair, um, last fall in Oxford Township and the Village of Oxford. Uh, we did from Walden all the way to Jocelyn, well, from Walden all the way to thirteen thirty-five Jocelyn. So that will pretty much take care of that, so that will be the art of it. Um, in addition, if you look on the last page, there's a couple of other little projects that I would really like to get done, and Melissa is gonna be our hero. Um, I did go out and get some quotes just by Happens Dance last year from Hutch Paving when they were up doing some, um, asphalt repairs. They did give me a quote, fifty-six thousand dollars of actually removing the chip coat from Jocelyn Road eight hundred feet almost to thirteen thirty-five Jocelyn. That section of the trail has failed, I mean, it needs to be redone. It wasn't good when it was done, but there's not much we can do about it till now. Uh, we can either A, fund it out of our own fund balance, B, I can find a donor, I have some friends at work for Ajax, um, who have offered assistance, or Melissa may be able to find us some money. So we can, we can work on that. Um, I have, that is something that I really would like to get done. Uh, we've had some failures over there over the last few years, and I don't think gravel would be the solution. We would have to do it, dig it out and resurface it with the three eight millions. I don't think that is sufficient, I think we need an asphalt paving there. It's something we can seal coat, it's something we can continually repair, and give a little water on it instead of it wash out. But because it's, we've got some problems with road roads, I don't know, what do you think, Aaron? You, you, you know where I'm talking, that chip coating out there.
I do, and I, I, I'm gonna speak, yeah. Have, did you see it before it was done? That was night and day, it was like our favorite section of the trail. We used to live right there, so, um, but I don't disagree, the trail needs to get done. Um, can I make one more comment?
You have the floor.
Okay. Different from our last conversation about the signs, I'm on the mindset of we can't just kind of sit back and wait for like, uh, a partnership with Oakland County. This is something that we've been talking about for a very long time, whether they're here to. here to support us, what that looks like. We're, our business is making sure the trail is taken care of. We've taken care of, uh, some southern portions and I think, uh, the northern portions have waited long enough to get addressed. So that's at least my opinion.
The only thing too is these are ARPA funds. We have to be used by end of twenty twenty-six.
Yeah.
And I, and I already have gravel.
Yeah, we'll move forward with that. Um, considering the ARPA monies that Addison, Oxford, Oxford's put up and, uh, or in funding some of the home projects to the ARPA through our budget, um, this project in front of you, eighty thousand, three hundred dollars. That's, that's in front of you. That will leave us with seventy-nine thousand dollars plus left, which should be more than enough to do this asphalt repair if it, if it were to come that way. We still have money left off, after that, so we just have to make sure we spend it before, before we have to give it back.
We're talking right.
We're pretty safe in that, in that, in America. Based, based on that, the, the calculations are, um, a little bit short, because I took the tree memory removal that we had done, that we, the job we've been done, but this doesn't have more to do, so.
Right.
That, that will come up once you get, these are, uh, estimated numbers. They're not final on the computer.
No. I, I budgeted, um, the gravel delivery, the gravel spreading, the days out there are, are pretty much set numbers. The variables are rolling and tree work. I may not need that tree work, but I don't want to get out there and go, oh crap, I need that tree down, I need this brush trip. I'd rather have a little bit of money in the budget to address some of these things that I know are going to pop up. If we don't use it, don't worry, I'll use it somewhere else. It'll be, it'll, it'll be good. It'll be good. Don't worry. As far as Oakland County, Melissa said that there's a possibility that fall mowing, winter mowing might be something that they can pay for. I'm thinking in the fall when we have Dave come down and do our vertical cut, um, you know, that, that runs us fifteen grand. That would be wickedly awesome if we could get them to partner with us on that one. Also some of our tree removal going into the future, we do, we're doing a lot of invasive stuff out there. The DNR is actually impressed with how well.
Thanks, Linda. Okay, uh, so, so with that in mind, Linda, considering this gets approved, what is your schedule?
My schedule would be, I would contact a couple of people at Ajax to see what kind of a, uh, program we can work out with them as far as reducing that cost fifty, from fifty-six thousand to a lesser amount. Uh, there's a high probability, um, that Ajax and Hutch has teamed together in some fashion.
Okay. Now, I'm with the trail resurfacing project.
As soon as it's dry.
As soon as it's dry.
Well, we started tree removal. Uh, I just got notice Matt is back from Grayling. His house was decimated by the trees in Grayling, Gaylord area. So he just got back with his wood chipper. Uh, so if he needed any trees removed, Matt is able to do it. As soon as the trail is dry, I'm hoping mid-May, third week in May, we'll be out there. But I can't do it until the trail is dry.
You'll have something for the council in June about the paving estimate.
Yep. But right now the target is about fifty-six thousand. It may be less. You know, I, I can't guarantee I'm getting anything for free, but I'm going to try and get a sale on it. And if I can get a sale on it, um, I would like to get that done as soon as possible. I mean, if, next week if I could. If you give me the okay, I'll, I'll, I'll be on it.
Well, we got, um, monies in front of us to approve for you to move. Counsel makes a motion and approves it. Any further comments? Any opposed motions?
Probably didn't make that motion.
Sorry. Vice Chair Brightfield.
I'll make the motion. It was written. I'll move to approve by an amount not to exceed eighty thousand, three hundred dollars for the Polyant Trail surface repairs, based on the itemized project cost provided by Polyant Trail manager Linda Moran. This eighty thousand, three hundred amount to be expensed to the account two nine eight eight fifty-three nine sixty-two, uh, point zero zero two ARPA expenses.
What's that for? Took it from?
Health support.
Counsel Colvin. Thank you. Okay, any further cast, question, discussion? If not, we will call with, uh, Counsel Madore.
Yes.
Vice Chair Brightfield.
Yes.
Chair Wright, yes. Counsel Moore.
Yes.
Counsel Colvin.
Yes.
For your lawyer.
Yes.
And Counsel Watley.
Yes.
Further motion carries. Onto public comment. Uh, I guess we'll concede you a public motion if you'd like to say. You're all set.
I'm all set.
You're all set. Okay. Onto, uh, Counsel Madre Commissary with Counsel Watley.
Nice job, Linda. You're doing a great job.
Thanks, Aaron. Beat me later.
Melissa, thanks for coming in. Look forward to the opportunity. Wow. It's so exciting to see our progress over the last few years. I am so pumped. We are getting stuff done and so, uh, great community support from everybody, so, thank you.
Treasurer Pfeifer.
Uh, yeah, um, again, thank you to, uh, Linda for your continued, uh, work and dedication. Uh, we're, we're lucky to have, um, and, um, Melissa, thank you. We're, we're excited about the partnership, as you've heard from everyone, and, um, we'll try not to just keep bugging you for money for everything we need, but we also would like as much.
Bothering all you want.
We could, we could, we'd like all the money. Uh, as, uh, as the new treasurer, and you know, we're kind of, I'm, I'm not in a groove yet with this group in that role, um, I, I, you know, looked at, um, I, I'm, I'm now treasurer of, I think, five different, um, boards that I've been appointed to, because somehow when I'm not there, I get appointed treasurer. I think it's how I became treasurer here. But, uh, that being said, um, I'm happy to do it. Obviously, uh, learning a lot as I go through the process. And just, um, I'm, as a, at a brief glance here, I, um, one of the things I'm trying to do, uh, where I'm getting active as, as treasurer and some of these other boards is to simplify, um, and to, um, ensure we're getting returns on the money we have, simplify accounts to streamline accounting. And, um, and so as I, as I look at this, and I'm not sure who, um, I, I, I don't think this needs to be fully aired here, but I'd like to, uh, to dig in a little bit further. As I look at, you know, we've got Oxford Bank, we've got Fifth, uh, Third Bank, we've got Choice One Bank, uh, that's, uh, you know, an expired CD it appears, uh, pool account, which is still on our accounting, but we've removed our funds, which I've also done for multiple boards that I'm on due to the lack of, uh, return on those funds. And, uh, and then of course Michigan Class, which I think is every treasurer's favorite. Um, it's definitely mine. Uh, so I, I guess I just want to, um, see if there's an appetite. Sometimes I've learned on some of these boards, there's, there's sacred cows where somebody loves this particular bank for a particular reason. And, um, but, you know, I, I'm looking for, um, little to no fees. I'm looking for returns on any money that's sitting and, um, and, uh, and I'm looking for simplification. And so if the count, the board has an interest in me pursuing that for this board, um, then uh, who, who was, I'm not sure who, who the previous treasurer was that I, uh, replaced.
Ford.
Pardon me?
Ford.
No, Bruce.
Bruce.
Okay. So there might not even be someone to, to meet with, but.
There is. There is.
Okay.
You can keep going and I'll, I'll, I'll give you it.
Okay. So if, if there's an interest for me to, for, for the, from the council, for me to pursue that line of thinking for this board, I'm more than happy to do it. I've, uh, had some discussions with, um, banks that are very interested in partnering with, uh, public, um, uh, you know, with, with us and other boards. And, uh, so obviously I want to utilize, um, scale. And, um, if I can, you know, say, hey, I'm bringing, you know, fi- five different, uh, boards, uh, you know, money to you, um, but here's what I'm looking for, uh, you know, it gives us, gives us bargaining power. So, um, those are my comments in terms of I'm willing, um, but if, if, if you guys, if everybody feels like we're in a pretty good place and we don't need to adjust, I don't think there's anything wrong with what we're doing, but I want to see returns on our money, um, you know, uh, and we have it, especially these days when returns are pretty easy to get in terms of, uh, more than any of us are used to getting. So, uh, that is, uh, that's my comment on there. And other than that, looking forward to, uh, beating up that trail that Linda's keeping so pretty.
All right. Thank you, uh, Counsel Colvin.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, everyone. And yeah, I'm looking forward to getting on the trail now that the weather's actually decent, so.
All right. Counsel Moore.
I have a comment, but it, get with me, we'll call, we have an auger, where those fence are rotting, where those posts, signposts are rotting. Because if it's not perfect, we have areas that won't perfect. So you could just be sitting in water. And if you go back in there with wood, it's not going to hold up. You might have to have an alternate material.
Addison is actually pretty good. Well, Addison, east of Hosner is where we're having the wood rot. Addison, Le- Leonard is okay with the posts, but Addison, further south is where we're having a problem with the posts rot.
Well, it's kind of, it won't, it won't take much to go out there and drill a hole by a post and see what's going on. Then you'll know.
Yeah. Well, they've also been up there for twenty-six years.
Twenty-six years.
Yeah, twenty-seven.
Yeah. Old tree water, you get about twenty, twenty-five years.
Yeah. We'll get there, Phil. We'll be good. We'll get there. I gotta.
Anything I can do to help you, you know.
You know, I know you.
Vice Chair Brightfield.
Great meeting. Thank you for being here. I'm sorry you had to stay and hear all the things I've done, yeah.
Trying to learn.
I think Linda's doing an outstanding job. A lot of the calculations, a lot of work putting that together. So good job, Linda.
Counsel Madore.
Um, I apologize for missing your presentation. I was looking forward to it, but traffic was really heavy getting here.
Oh.
Um, uh, we had a developer meeting with a large development and, and you know, had those go. So it dragged a little long, so I'm sure, perhaps I'll look at the, uh, go back and watch the.
Test script to do the presentation again. It was fun.
Sure, yes. I'll send you a link. So my apologies.
Okay, Melissa, thank you for attending, helping us out. You actually. You, uh, you, uh, it was, uh, it's kind of a lot, it's amusing to our ears to say, you know, someone else is partnering with us to, uh, preserve our trail and enhance it, to make it, uh, the poster child for the rest of the county.
Yeah, part of it.
So, yeah, that's, that's definitely, uh, a great thing, great partnership there to hopefully great things become, uh, as well as, uh, Counsel Colvin knows, and we said on Oxford Township, all together and, uh, Treasurer Bill Farrow has been the treasurer, has taken all the information for the financials over the years, even though we have a designated treasurer on this trail, he's been the one leading the charge, getting you the information. Not that he does a bad job for it, but I, I commend you for wanting to say, can we do better? You know, because, uh, mindset is, uh, we call it the SLY method in Oxford Township, safety, liquidity, yield. But sometimes if you've got a better idea to give us more money, you got my vote for that. So, uh, so, yeah, he'd be the one that to talk to, why he does what he does with the money, because he's in charge of it. On behalf of the Polyant Trail, we pay eleven hundred dollars a month.
You're not there.
Yeah. So basically twenty dollars a week to have them manage this money, which is a great deal on that, but, uh, that's who you probably want to get a hold of.
Okay.
Why, 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 four hundred dollars in Oxford Bank and, you know, flag style where those monies are, that's, uh, what's going on there. So other than that, uh, they may be a relatively longer meeting this time than, than usual, but to save us two hundred meetings that we have, just a couple of minutes, so, so hopefully this is working out for everybody. Now we'll go to Kevin and then Linda, your final word and then your order turn. Kevin.
I'm good. I'll pass.
You're good, so Linda.
All right, first off, um, our Polyant Trail Drive with Oxford and Addison Youth Assistance, we came back with, uh, five hundred and forty-eight dollars cash. Sold that one into the bank yesterday. Uh, we also, the DNR has come out and surveyed the property at N E S here in the village, and they have sent certified registered return receipt letters to the, the property owner demanding removal of that fence. That is something that is encroaching on the Polyant Trail property, but since it is DNR property and the Polyant Trail has had no success in getting the landowner to move or the business owner to move the fence, the DNR has taken up the charge. So that is in the hands of the real estate division. I am going to get with the paving companies and see what we can do and get that done as soon as possible. Melissa, we have all kinds of open projects for you to come, I mean, this is just, this is just June's work. So just to reiterate, one hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and three cents will be spent by the end of summer, whether it's paving, uh, or trail resurfacing, of which, um, thirty-two thousand and four hundred and twenty-two dollars and two cents, it's our, three cents, has already been spent on gravel, seven hundred and fifty dollars been spent on tree work. So a total of one hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and three cents will be spent, mostly on ARPA funds, a line share of it out of, um, the charter township of Oxford. Thank you. As a taxpayer in charter township of Oxford, I appreciate it. But any other questions for me?
I make a motion. We adjourn.
Yeah, motion by Vice Chair Brightfield, second by Counsel Madore to the general meeting at four twenty-eight PM. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Reposed. Motion carries. We can adjourn. Thank you to everybody.
You got it. It's a need, it's a need.